As Janie finds that we're ready to call to order at 3:02.
Okay.
And the first on the agenda is the June 9, 2021 meeting. I will share over to those. Janie had sent those to me just this afternoon.
I just did them this afternoon.
So. These are the minutes. I think. It doesn't look like there's, oh, here it is. Discussion of previous and future committee goals. Gertrude Creed agreed to chair this committee again. Okay. I was going to say important to have that in there.
I don't remember or it didn't show up in my notes that we had a. Vote or anything, so I just put that in.
As long as it goes in that it was agreed upon by the committee. Can be a voter by test agreement.
Well, do you have a, oh, nevermind, I'll let you read.
I move to approve. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do you want to?
Aye.
Do you want to look at those October minutes again, Eric, too? We never did approve those.
Oh, yes. Give me just a second and I'll bring those up as well. There we go. So these were for the October minutes. That was a discussion of the parking lot usage. The desire to get it repaved and the desire to. Communicate to the village that making it a public lot was not considered to be a good thing.
Yeah, I actually have to point out that in looking over section four, A, B, and C, D. Those reasons are all, I feel, I feel even more strongly about them now because. They all, after what we talked about with people sneaking through that parking lot, it's all the more reason not to have it for public use. So I think that this states our position really well. So I would motion to approve.
I guess I'll second because Bonnie, you weren't at that meetings.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I think technically I'm sustaining since I wasn't there.
That's fine. Fair enough.
Minutes are approved.
What's going on?
Which takes us up to the hiring a contract manager. Basically, discussion of the documents that we had received from Joe Huberty. So. Who recap very, very briefly. Following the donation received from. From Cal. Kathy, you and I and Janie had met with. Briefly with Joe Huberty and asked him to prepare some information for us.
Was Janie, Janie, were you?
I was not there. I tried to get there.
You're not there?
And I couldn't.
Okay. That's right. We had mentioned it to you. That was where you came in, but you weren't able to make that. Okay. And then Joe had said that he would prepare some information for us at our request. One was a calendar. To follow as far as what we would be working on accomplishing each month. Another. That was one of the documents that he sent. He also encouraged us. Take a look at getting a construction manager to oversee. The project here at the start as well as to be somebody that we could bring back who would be familiar with the building throughout the. The other renovation projects that we are hoping and planning to do in the years, next year or two. As the capital campaign gains traction. So. To.
Eric, was there?
Encouragement to get a construction.
Sorry. Was there anything else besides those two things, a calendar and a recommendation for?
Those were the, those were the big ones.
Eric, there's actually.
Asked him for an estimate.
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion about cost and I did send, I sent. I made minutes as though it was a foundation meeting and I think I sent it to Bonnie and Jamie as well. But so, and if you don't have those, Eric has them, it'll goes into more detail. We spent a long time talking about. Possible cost, which is something we have to get back to today.
Yeah. And there was a lot of discussion of cost. Joe's take on the cost summary looks like that. If we get a construction manager, then that person would be the one that the cost estimate. Which is why we don't have any updates on that. At this time.
So Eric.
I'm looking for that email so that I can. Forward that along. Yes.
Yeah, I guess this is sort of my, I'm looking at this as sort of the chicken and the egg problem. I was under the impression Joe was going to give us a tighter estimate. His, his range, even our range when we talked about Kale's contribution was, we're talking 35,000 to 50,000. And then Joe was talking 50 to 85,000. So there's, there could be a $50,000 range in this and we don't have $85,000. And as I said to Joe. It should not cost $85,000 to renovate that room that already exists. So. There's got to be a lot of tightening up on these numbers, which makes me. Somewhat uncomfortable to commit to a calendar. And interviewing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Without knowing what we're talking about cost wise. Now perhaps I misunderstood and. We hire, but do we hire a manager to tell us it's going to cost $85,000, which we can't do anyway? I don't quite get the sequencing here. In fact, I know Joe said it was good because we did have this discussion about fireplaces and he was going to kind of get back to us with some numbers. I know they were very, very rough.
The, the final line in the email that he had sent to us, if you hire a construction manager, that firm will do the cost estimating for the construction. If you hire an owner's rep or opt for general contractor delivery, then we will do the estimating.
So we're not going to have an estimate, so we hire someone.
That is how I read it.
And we're going to. To give us an estimate, but.
Wait a minute. Can you read that again? It sounded to me that if we decide to go with the general. Contractor, they'll do the estimate. I mean, sorry.
Yeah.
That last sentence again.
If you hire a construction manager, that firm will do the cost estimating for the construction. If you hire an owner's rep or opt for general contractor delivery, we will do the estimating.
Okay.
And if I'm correct, sorry, Jan.
That shows my ignorance because I don't know what a general contractor delivery situation is. I don't know what that means.
Well, I think Eric, Eric, I believe Joe's strong preference is a project manager.
Yes.
Okay. And that's what we've done in the past. It's kind of like Jenny, when we did the roof number.
Yeah.
Was the go-to guy.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, that that ended up being very helpful to have that guy there.
Yes. And certainly when we did the last renovation, that was what we, in 2011, that was what we did then as well.
Can I make a motion that we opt for the project manager approach on this renovation? So we can then move forward on it because again, when I raise my concerns about disruption of service, dust, noise. I can tell you that I was very reassured when you mentioned that there would be, you know, a project manager on site routinely. I don't know if it means permanently, but at least routinely to help make sure the library can still meet its. You know, service goals for the community at the same time as we're hopefully improving the whole facility for the community.
Okay, I will second that.
I'm going to. Stick my finger in this one. I would say that we've framed the motion that we have a strong preference for. Because with all I'm hearing about construction and timelines and projects, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, we may, hopefully we will have that option. And it'll be a strong first choice of ours, but if, if it comes down to not having the option, then we're going to have to go back and have another motion. So if we could, if we could frame it so that the committee strongly prefers to take on a project manager.
Okay, I've got, I've got right now that Bonnie moves that we have a strong preference for a project manager.
Yeah.
Is that okay with you, Bonnie?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll second that. So I guess. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're good.
Excellent.
So then what would be the next, to put out RFPs for the ones that he gave us? He gave us a list of three or four, right?
Well, he gave us. Four names, one of whom it sounded like was too busy to participate. One of the names that included there was Justin Pathman. We did work with Justin during the 2011 renovation and I would say that while there were some. Things that we would probably do over again about that renovation. Justin was, would not be one of them.
You would not redo him or you would?
Whoop, Eric's frozen.
I know my internet connection's not great, so I'm going to go off camera.
Okay.
My help.
But he was, he was very helpful and on point to the full staff and was, was very receptive to. Any concerns that we had as far as getting things in line to keep us open and working during what was a highly disruptive renovation. That whole first floor was. Poured out for several months. He even managed to keep us, keep the workmen going during most of a week where the library was without electricity.
Wow.
So. Yeah, that was one of those summers where we had, we had a couple of them actually recently here where we had storms and without power there for a while.
So I can remember that.
So. You know, there were some disaster there, but you know, that was really outside his scope. He was there as the spearheading the implementation. So he's someone I would definitely be comfortable bringing in again. In terms of looking at the names, I did follow up with. Pounds. Within the scope of the.
Eric, we lost you again.
We lost you. You were frozen there for a minute.
Was I? Okay, where did I leave off?
You were starting to talk about a second. Possibility for. Personnel or hire a project manager.
Um, maybe.
Well, you had concluded your comments about the first guy.
Yeah.
Put it that way.
So in, in terms of what we would do to move forward. I did talk to our legal counsel as Joe had suggested that we do. And he confirmed that the law does provide that you've got a lot more leeway as far as bringing in a construction manager. Which means that you can. Then you can go ahead and bring them in without having to go through the full bid process where you've got everything posted for night for 30 days and. You do the formal recorded and televised bid opening. Et cetera, et cetera. So. That, that is an option there that we, that we have on the table, that we don't have to go through the full process. So since we've got three names on, on the table, one option would be to just start with those three and set up a meeting. With the committee and each of those one at a time. You know, not at the same time like we're doing Building and Grounds Jeopardy Edition. But, you know, one-on-one, so to speak, with four of us equating one of the sides.
Excuse me. Do we have, do we have three or four names? I guess I was thought with this additional man that he. The one that you worked with before, I thought there was four, but maybe.
One of the.
It was Shane McNutt. There were. And I can't bring up the. Take a look at his. I thought they were. Eric, we lost your video, your audio, I think. Jamie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Jenny, I'm going to run to get my iPad and then I can look up what I'm asking Eric about.
Okay.
And we can discuss that. I'll be with you.
Eric, you're on mute.
Muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Why am I? Okay. Could you still hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Well.
Eric, while Kathy's looking. When we're done with all of this, can you send me those documents that Joe sent again? Because I couldn't find them either. Or maybe Kathy can find them.
Yeah, we're looking for Joe's letter. That indicated that he had spoken to. In particular, I remember Shane McNutt, and then there were other companies that he had discussed with us. And then it included the fellow you just spoke about, but I thought there were four.
Here.
Get, find the letter either Kathy.
No, I've got so much. Act agreement.
Got it here somewhere. Here.
Can you send it to us before you just put it up?
Yep, that's what I'm.
Yeah, and Kathy, I think my recollection is similar to yours. I think there were four companies listed, one of which was not recommended. Leaving.
He was sort of a standalone kind of.
I remember reading that document and I thought, I thought I read him, read Joe say that he hardly endorsed all of them.
Well, it's the fourth whoever that was. I think it was. More his business structure. My impression was the business structure was such that he wasn't the strongest candidate, but.
Okay.
A definite passive, but I'm just. That's why I was trying to refresh my memory here.
Okay. Did you guys receive?
Yes.
Well, this is the prospectus.
So the email that you just forwarded, Eric, it's, it's an email as opposed to an attachment from Joe Huberty that outlines. Four companies totals are all acronyms, all of them.
Yeah, I don't.
Yep.
Well, there's Shane McNutt, Independent Construction Services and Rethink Projects.
Yep.
Then he. Indicates. Kind of the go-to people at those three. And then I believe the. Is it the fourth one is if we reach out to an FQC? Is that the general contractor thing? Except that isn't.
Yeah, I'm happy to read it if that would be helpful for the group. So it reads, we also reach out to FQC. Another construction management firm with extensive library experience. They were less certain of their ability. Excuse me, availability. They were less certain of their availability.
There you go.
I shared the draft schedule, but have not heard back. If you want a fourth firm, not recommended, I think he's saying just. From the three, if you want a fourth firm, the contact is Jack Hayes at FQC.
Thank you for clarifying.
So Justin Portman is with a firm that is in the top three. Is that correct?
Yes, Justin Pathman.
Thank you. Okay, good.
Justin Pathman, yeah. And if I understand correctly, he was on site during the roofing project and was very helpful to the staff.
No, he was on site during the 2011 renovation. An employee of. Joe's firm managed our roofing project. His first name was Sean.
Okay.
So it looks like the three candidates that we would reach out to are SNC, SMC. ICS and RP. Eric, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we don't need an RFP to begin the process?
Correct.
Right.
So I think that. Makes sense as a next step to look at setting up a one-on-one meeting with each of those three firms.
Well, that sounds like. A lot of work for you, Eric, but. Let's go it. Let's go for it. Would it, do you think it would be possible to set? Would we be doing this remotely? Do you think it would be possible to set them up like 30 minutes apart from each other, the three of them at some? Point, so I don't know if that's even feasible, but.
Well, we could certainly set them up so that they would be one after another. In, in terms of interview, I away from taking that approach just because if you've got more than two people that you're talking to, then that could get to be a long. A long go.
Yeah, yeah.
Because then you can end up, you know, going through interviews for three or four hours. By the end, you're like, I don't care who this next person is. I hate them.
Exactly. I was just thinking we also.
I hate everything at this point. I hate the world. That's what meetings do to you after four hours.
Yeah. The other thing is we need to come up with a, you know, a list of questions so that we ask them. We're asking the same questions of each of the three.
Joe would provide it a list of suggested questions.
Okay, great.
I would. Encourage us to meet on site. And at least schedule an hour for each appointment. Hopefully they won't be that long, but. I, it sounds like only one of these individuals has ever been to our library and I would. Be more comfortable with someone who at least eyeballs what we're talking about and where we're doing it and what we have in mind, kind of a walkthrough, very brief.
That's a good idea, Kathy.
It is.
Agreed.
But you said that we already have a list of questions.
Yes. Joe sent us. And Eric, you're going to have to get together, get a packet for us to, I'll take the hard copy in front of us, but he sent us, it was one of the four documents he sent us, which were questions and also a timetable of how he sees the project unfolding. And. I don't recall what the second, it was four, three or four.
Here. Is one of the four that Joe had sent us. I've forwarded. So here's the sample questions.
Oh, perfect, perfect.
Yeah, the interesting thing about this, I don't even know what these things mean. What is value engineering process?
We'll definitely want to make sure that we know what all of these things mean.
Right.
Hey, Rick, what is value engineering processes? Yeah. My husband's sitting right here.
I think I just looked at different engineering approaches.
I would guess that value engineering processes would be quality control, maybe?
That might be part of it.
The first question.
Question about this quality control, so huh.
Yeah.
Can you say, can you, come on here, say it louder.
My dated recollection, value engineering has to do with the cost value of performing a certain task or engineering a certain task, how much value is provided to you economically? Is one approach more cost effective than another? Is one more going to generate more revenue than another? That type of thing is what I recall value engineering is dealing with. If you're planning a project, you know, it's one more cost effective than another. Is one pri, is one engineering firm going to do it more? The less costly approach to getting something done, that would be value engineering definition, as far as I recall. Maybe even James. No? That's what I recall.
Thank you.
And Eric, if we're reaching out to, like in RFPI, I know puts all the documents online and people research the documents and then the if we're reaching out with our NFPI, are we providing, what are we providing these prospective project managers?
Well, I would say that we could lean on the on the documents for the RFQ as a core, which provide information. The samples provide kind of a framework for providing that information and we could provide some basics about project, at least we have.
The RFQ is for LaMond Public Library.
Well, yeah, it needs to be updated. So that's for the Lake Bluff Public Library. It's a it's a template is what it is. But I think that's a template that we could repurpose to not just be for the Lake Bluff Public Library that, but that we could repurpose it to be rather than an RFQ, just an FAQ about the project. But we would want to put together a packet of information that we could provide to people.
I don't think, I mean, I don't, are we ready to do that? And well, I guess if we're going to do this right, we, and I'm, I mean, Janie and Bonnie, you're going to hear from me, I am just going to be the cost monkey on this because I represent the foundation as far as I'm concerned in this committee. And the foundation has X number of dollars and that's all we can commit to and I'm hesitant, I have a hesitancy, I would like to get the best possible project manager to go the nine yards with, but if we screw it up in the first, you know, inning, they may walk out on us. So I don't want that to happen. So I want to make sure that we put our best foot forward and we know, we understand the questions we're asking and we understand the information we're putting out there. So we're getting the best possible information vis a vis. We want, I want them to be well-prepared and I want us to be well-prepared. So I'm just kind of wondering if we need to, rather than jump on an interview process right now, maybe take a little bit of time and make sure we know what we're asking for. I have no problem with these three to four firms that we have recommended to us. But I want to go back to, we have a whole lot of paperwork and data from Edward Anderson. So what is it we share? I don't know that we're ready to do that efficiently at this point. But maybe that's the process and they take it over. I don't know.
So I, I, I'm going to build with a question on what Kathy just said. I, I don't have an answer, but when project manager or construction manager is put in place for previous work at the library, how did that person feel for their time? I've been thinking about it as probably incremental to the cost of the renovation itself. And would money that was accrued from the previous fiscal year, could that be used to pay for the construction manager?
The funds from the general reserve could always be used to if the construction manager certainly, that would be a decision of the library board. My recollection a recollection of the contract that we had with the last contract manager back in 2011 was that the, the agreement was we set up such that they received a specific amount of funds for their service. I would have to take a look back to confirm that, but that's my recollection. The, the idea being that you know, having them, you know, be in and you know, in a contract that essentially up than that, that it was.
Eric, you just froze again.
Did I?
Yeah.
Good at that.
Yeah, sorry about that. So that is kind of what my gut feeling was too, that we, when we did the roof, we paid a specific contract amount to the, to that project manager and we may have put a clause in there if there were any surprises because that was one of the things we weren't sure what was going to happen once we get that roof opened up was what kind of surprises we were going to have. We may have put a clause in there for extra if, if anything bad happened, but I, I that, that was my memory of it. I'd have to look back at the information again.
So Janie, are you recalling that we, that was a set fee for Sean?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are you, is your recollection that that was a set fee for Sean?
Yeah.
I don't know how we actually could have done it any differently.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's, I think that's what it was.
Yeah, because he didn't work for the roofing firm and there were two firms. There were the roofing and then the Mason people.
Right, right. And wasn't, wasn't that general, wasn't that project manager part, somebody from Edward Anderson?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Sean, something?
That's right.
Kelly.
Sean Kelly? Well, how about this? If we pause and Eric and somebody else from the committee, I'd be happy to help, whomever, puts together a fact sheet that is suitable for presentation to these prospective project managers prior to an interview with the intention of asking Joe Huberty to look over the fact sheet and see if he thinks it's sufficiently informative to get going and this and that. I just don't want to backtrack back and forth, you know, let's get the paperwork in front of the eyes that know what it is supposed to look like versus our just.
I think that's a great idea.
That sounds good. I think, I think you got to pull the information together before you go out and talk to folks so that you can put that in front of them, then I'll be on the same page as far as what you're talking about.
I volunteer to help to work with Eric to do that.
I'd be happy to help too.
So Eric, why don't you set a timeline on that? And bring in whomever from all three of us that you think would be useful. And then we'll get a draft and then we can, then we'll be where I think the next step is to get this out to people and to set up interviews. They'll be well-informed, we'll be better informed.
Sounds good. So get to started on, get started on that. And I think couple of weeks of the latest, we should have, have something together. We've got a lot of, a lot of information and documents to pull from. I think it'll be mostly a matter of just getting everything into one pot that we need and then reframing it for what we're going to be sending it out for.
Eric, do you recall that Joe had an estimate in mind for the fee of a project manager or is that a percent of the project? I don't recall that.
I don't recall either. I don't recall there being a number. So if there was, I missed it.
I don't remember either. So is there anything else we want to get done today?
I'm not related, I think, to the, the building project. I think question would be if we had any other business. There's another baby.
Yeah.
Hey.
Got grandkids there, Janie. I saw that.
One, yeah, I'll show it to you in a minute here. Yeah, okay. So there's no other business. I, but I feel comfortable now that we've decided on this approach.
I have a quick question. When, when would we go to the board and ask for, I guess, a vote or approval on the expense associated with a construction manager for this project?
That would be after, after we would meet with the, the candidates and then we would make a recommendation and usually they will go along with our recommendation.
Alright. I don't know that that's going to be the process. We do have a, we have a foundation and the donation has made, been made to the foundation, actually a few donations that have made to the foundation. And the purpose of the foundation is to fund the project.
Right, but, but Bonnie's talking specifically about the, the contract for the general or for the project manager, not, not for the cost of the project itself.
Well, that's got to be a board discussion whether or not that's what the board wants to do versus, because there's going to be several. I think if we, if all this gets done, it's going to be several projects. So are each of those projects going to be taken care by the library? It's not in the budget.
Okay.
I mean, this is, these are the things, we're very new at this and these are the things that have to be discussed.
So, so your feeling Kathy is that we should take the, the the entire thing, including the cost of the project manager should come out of foundation funds? That's.
Um, as a director of the foundation, it's my understanding that that's the purpose of the foundation.
Okay.
That's why I preface this by saying I'm very uncomfortable not knowing what this is going to cost. Because it's hard, it's hard for me to say, don't worry about it, Janie, the foundation's going to pick this up, but if it's, as I said, we, we ended up with a range of $35,000 to $85,000 and then that's not even with a project manager fee. So that could quickly be $100,000 and that's well beyond the scope of
Yeah, I got you.
project by either the library or the foundation. I think sitting down and talking, you know, as I said, it's the chicken and the egg. Finding a project manager, we feel very comfortable sitting down, talking scope and sequence and timing with him will really help us piece this out, but I don't know what it costs to do that and I don't I don't know, Eric, why don't you weigh in? You're president of the foundation.
Uh, well, I think in terms of the cost that it's a little bit difficult right now to, to evaluate. As you mentioned, chicken and the egg, I bet that it would be nice to be able to really calculate, you know, the resources that we would need to allocate and where those would need to come from. But before we take some of the next steps, but reality is, is that we don't have a ton of information as far as the cost of the various portions of this project. You know, I do think that between the foundation and if needed, maybe a little assistance from the, the library that any cost ought to be covered. You know, I'm in full agreement that the, the higher end costs that were, were discussed there seem really unlikely that we would be edging towards that higher amount. You know, my, my, my gut feeling is, is that as we have dealt with this project all along, that we would look for opportunities to be as efficient as possible throughout. So in, in terms of letting the, the trustees know, the, the next board meeting is on July the 20th. If we haven't made a decision at that point as far as recommending a particular construction manager, I would say just mention it in the, the committee reports so that there's an update as far as what we're working on, that people know that there will be a recommendation coming.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't imagine it would be too much of a surprise. I mean, when you've got a big project, you know, I don't, I don't feel like a possible recommendation for a construction manager is really that out of the blue.
Well, I, I think we have to advise this current board, which is pretty new, that the library has made a substantial investment to this project already. And I also think beyond the purview of the BNG committee, this at least, if indeed we felt that this was a, a good, a good way to move forward, I think it would have to be in conjunction with the finance committee. This finance committee is going to, may have every right to overrule because I don't, I have no idea what this is going to cost. If this is like $5,000, I say go for it. If it's $35,000, I'm going to say, you know what, that's a lot of money to say if someone point their finger and tell people to do things. So that's why I keep talking about this poor little chicken in the egg.
Yeah, agreed. If it gets to be a, the, the larger the expense, the more likely we ought to really bring in the finance committee to, to weigh in as well.
Yeah, we have to consider, you know, that we just set goals of all these committees and the finance committee, a big goal of theirs is to sort of have a long-term look at salaries and where we're going to get money for that. And if we turn around and start paying project managers, I'm just you know, being the, the naysayer here, the village certainly would point that out to us if we were asking for additional tax dollars. So there's a very big picture that has to be considered.
Absolutely.
Let's, let's, let's take care of this. So I'm not saying, I, I don't know. I really, you know, I'd be very comfortable to get some real dollar numbers in front of us and hopefully we can do that. But I think if we spec up a little, if we can prepare a very good document to go to prospective project managers, it will help them and help us have a sit-down with three or four good companies. And hopefully answer a lot of these questions, I hope.
So that we're still moving forward with the same plan we had before you brought that up Kathy. So yeah, I, that's, that's what we should do. The, the three of us, the four of us get together, work on a document. Eric, if you can provide us all with that copies of that information from Joe that you put up there email us all that so we can study it and get together and start preparing that, so we get that done. Start preparing that, sooner we get that done, the. Sooner we can. Get this ball rolling, I guess.
Sounds good.
Okay. Alright, anything else anybody wants to bring up? No? Alright, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I so moved.
I second, I'll second.
Okay, I.
I. Hi.
Meeting is adjourned at 3:52.